To the October 21st McMinnville City Council work session. And I will call us to order. Claudia, do you want to do a roll call?
Yes, Councilor Drabkin?
Here.
Councilor Garben?
Here.
Councilor Geary?
Here and loving this meeting so far.
Councilor Stassenz?
Here.
I didn't see Councilor Peralta. Councilor Peralta? Council President Minky?
Here.
And Mayor Hill?
Here. Well, again, we'd like to welcome everyone to our work session this evening. And this is a presentation and a discussion that has taken lots of effort, a lot of work over a long period of time. But the Classification and Compensation Analysis Consultants Recommendation. And I would submit that we have some of the consultants on the line with us, Kylie. But I'm going to turn it over to you to present and start the discussion tonight.
Okay, well, thanks so much for being here tonight. And today we have our consultants from Gallagher Benefit Services with us. They've worked on this project now for many, many months. And I'm going to turn it over to them so they can kind of just roll right into the project and what they want to share with you all this evening. I do want to refer you to the staff report in your packet this evening. And we're providing recommendations from the consultants tonight, but not asking the city council to make a motion or to approve anything, is we will need to go through those recommendations as city staff, review them with the lens of our core services conversations, with our budget, with any budget uncertainty we might be having due to COVID, all of that. And then we'll be making really a final recommendation to the council, either separately or that might just come through the budget process. And Jeff and I will work together on how we want to handle that. So this is informational, so we can learn what they've been doing and what they've been up to. They'll talk a little bit about the methodology that they've used in this project, about what the system is, kind of an overview of class and comp. And then down to some of the financials during the recommendations. And then they'll be able to also answer questions. And I'm going to be on the call too, so I can answer any questions that you may have. With that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Hey, can everybody hear me? Perfect, sorry about that. I had some technical issues where the speaker almost went to the Bluetooth upstairs. So the family was enjoying the music at the beginning right there. My wife's like, I think I can hear everything here. So Deeksha can't share her screen yet. So I'm trying to navigate, make sure I have the most recent version of the PowerPoint. So I apologize for the technical issue there. Hold on a second. So I'm trying to get it on my Gmail here because we have a system that I have to log into and it makes it way, way slow. So I apologize for that login to it outside of that system. But as I wait for that, I just want to introduce ourselves and say it's been a pleasure working with Kylie and the team and the city on this and learning the experience and everything like that. My background, I've been with Gallagher for about 15 years. Been doing class and comp projects exactly like this all of that time for cities, counties, school districts, states across the country and everything like that. So we...
Mike, we lost your audio. But I can hear what I think is your kids again.
Oh, my gosh, sorry about that. I do not understand what's happening. ology. There I am, am I back now?
We can hear you now.
Thank you. I'm trying to get this loaded on here. Deeksha still can't share her screen. And she had the presentation, so I apologize for...
Mike, this is Karen. I'm not sure, but I might be able to share my screen. Do you want me to try?
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead. For some reason, it's not popping up on Deeksha's. I don't know if that's because she's in Citrix or whatever that is. There we go. I know we have it.
It's showing.
All right, we can make that a little bit bigger and put it in presentation mode there. Make sure it's sharing the right screen because I know Karen, you got two screens.
Yeah. Trying to figure out how to get that working right. Let's see, what do you see right now on my screen?
Blue.
The Windows emblem.
Okay, let me try and turn off one of my screens, see if that makes... Okay.
There it is. Perfect.
Okay, all right, so.
All right, so. We're going to walk through this relatively quickly from our perspective. But if you have any questions, please stop us. We'd rather have this be a conversation and not save questions to the end or anything like that. So I think we can use the chat feature or anything like that. We'll be monitoring that. And Kylie, if you see anything there, just please stop us and let us know. I introduce myself, the other two folks on the call is Deeksha and Karen. Deeksha, do you want to introduce yourself and then Karen? Oh.
Uh, am I on it now?
There we go.
All right, perfect. Hi, everyone, I'm Deeksha Garg. I've been working with Kylie and Mike on the project for you at McMinnville. I've been a consultant with Gallagher now for the last six years and work on other city and county and other public sector projects for classification and compensation.
Hi, my name is Karen Welch and I also work with Gallagher and support Mike and Deeksha on various projects. I'm supporting them on the backend, some of the analytics, if you will. And I'm happy to be here. Thank you for your time tonight.
All right, so let's flip ahead to the next slide here quick since I can't get this. So we're going to walk through just what the project was, walk through each of these phases of the project to understand what went into it. And then ultimately, we want to spend most time on the market comparisons, the results, the salary structure development and what those implementation costs are. Those are where the big questions are. But we also want to make sure you're educated just on the amount of work that kind of goes into that process. It's not just the dollars at the end or anything like that. There's a lot of internal thoughts, internal equity, all those concepts that go into this. So let's flip through to the next slide. All right, so project administration, we were hired to do a class and comp study. Again, this is what we work at. We're going to look at just setting up the project, make sure we understand all the ins and outs as much as possible at the beginning of the project. What are the pain points? What are the issues that are present? Then the first step is to understand the work that's there and then understand internal equity and everything. So these are the main objectives. Review the current classifications, develop and revise classification structure. That means starting with understanding the work that's there. That's why we spend a heavy time looking at the descriptions, questionnaires, all those types of aspects. The next piece is to make sure we're collecting market data and salary information on appropriate comparable organizations, but then also on comparable jobs. That means job content, not just title to title. And we'll get into that a little bit. And then take that information, develop a new pay structure, look at internal equity and market results. And the key concept here is that developing the internal equity is ensuring that we have a system and a framework that has compliance for the new Oregon Pay Equity Act and everything that exists. And that's what we kind of pride ourselves on doing that over the last 30 years, having extensive experience in that area. And then develop the cost options for moving into that structure. And so there's various different approaches, everything, and we'll walk through that as well here. Go ahead, Karen.
My screen is frozen. There we go. Had to go again.
All right, yes, classification part. This is developing the position description questionnaires. We want to get raw data information from the employees, understanding what the essential responsibilities are, decision-making examples. We received approximately 115 of those. Supervisors had an opportunity to review and comment, not change original content at all, but basically just to review and add explanation to various of these. We had 10 occupational panels representing approximately 56% of the employee job title. Now, we don't need to talk to every single employee. We don't need to talk to all the job titles. Some are more understandable based upon the questionnaires, the documentation that exists. But a lot of them, we just want to make sure we have a chance to get the nuances of. We deal with a lot of different municipalities. Everybody's structured a little bit differently, but making sure we understand what the differences, similarities are between different positions. So from those, we developed a revised classification system. Went from 133 titles down to 70 titles. That does not mean that you're going to be at 70 titles for the next five years. That is going to continuously change. And we actually set an example of a discussion that happened, I think it was today or yesterday. Just like it's constantly going to be reviewed as new jobs are created and some jobs go away. Ensures greater consistency, simplifies that classification structure so that Kylie has the ability to kind of build flat jobs on a more continuous basis. It's more responsive to changing work requirements, everything as well. And it also allows for position-specific titles within a broad classification. Instead of creating a whole new job description for that, it's very similar, but it deals in this program or in this system. Those are what sometimes employees want to make sure that it reflects on the outside of what their expertise is for the city. So that's what that process was. That was reviewed through management discussions and by HR to revise that and come up with that 70 classifications. That was our basis for developing internal equity and then also for getting the market data from the external market. So on to the job evaluation piece. So this is a methodology looking at internal equity. Now, there are numerous different job evaluation methodologies that are out there. The methodology that we're using here is called the Decision Band Method. It's a formal job valuation method that is applied to every single job. It helps with internal equity, identifying that job value hierarchy, similarly situated positions, substantially similar responsibilities. But it helps with that management evaluation as jobs continuously change. Kylie can take this and apply and say, yes, this job has changed at a level that, yes, it does go to the next grade. We're looking at it through a lens that can be applied to all these positions. DBM, we have proven, we have extensive experience. We're, Deeksha and I are in Minnesota, Karen's down in Phoenix. But in Minnesota, we've had a Pay Equity Act in place since 1984. It's required all public sector organizations, cities, counties, school districts to comply with a very rigorous, multi-linear regression analysis between female and male-dominated jobs. The approach that we take here is the same approach that we take in the clients there to help them comply with that. And all of our organizations pass this test. They have an underpayment ratio test that organizations have to pass in order to continue to get state funding. For substance, it's pretty important that they pass this. But the issue here is that Oregon doesn't really have a test to comply with yet. So we are going through the lens of something else to ensure compliance that it would pass any type of test that they would put in place. And that's based on our experience working in there, also working with pay equity compliance within, up in Canada, where they have very strict laws as well in Quebec and Ontario. So that's the methodology. It is gender and race neutral. We're looking at the job responsibilities, not individual positions or anything like that. It's consistent and for ongoing implementation. The next slide here really does get into what DBM is itself. And I can really nerd out on this for a while if you want me to because I enjoy the concept of it. But it's, we'll let you, you can have this later on and read it. But it's, the Decision Band Method focuses on work. We're not looking at the skills, the knowledge of the incumbents in it, but what is the work of those levels responsible for? So that's why it is trying to look at it through that lens, it's gender, race neutral. Now, we still have to analyze it from that perspective because gender and races dominate different classifications. We have to ensure that we're looking at it in that perspective. But DBM looks at the value of the job, the premises, the value job reflects the importance of the organization. All jobs are important. They just have different impacts to them. The importance or the impact is directly related to decision-making requirements. And the key concept in this, as opposed to point factor methods or anything else to evaluate jobs, is that we're starting from a common spot. All jobs are making decisions and decision-making is measurable within that. So the next slide kind of just goes through, it's a very broad three-step process that we look at, where we're trying to funnel jobs from one point down into more minute comparisons. So we want to first get all the jobs. What is the highest level decision-making that this job is responsible for? What band does that go into? Now, most of the folks on this call right here are going to represent band F. You are the policymaking council of the city. That's why that exists. Other levels are going to be in band E, band D, and band C. But we do know that every single job is not going to be doing all of their responsibilities at their highest level. So we're not trying to add up points to get to a grade. We're first saying that, hey, in Kylie's position, for example, maybe she has some D-level responsibilities, some C and some B. It's like, you know what? The highest level responsibility that she has is in D. That is the bucket that that position should go in first. And we're talking about Kylie, but it's a job as a HR person. That is the role. That is where the bucket, that job should fall. Then we start comparing all those jobs that are in that smaller bucket into the appropriate grade within that bucket. Then, once you do look at the two different grades in that bucket, then look at the comparisons on those job difficulties, those nuanced levels of the positions. But the ability to have more minute and finite comparisons on a smaller group of jobs helps with the overall inter and intra-rater reliability. So if we came back at this five years from now and rated the jobs, we're going to be very consistent with where we are now in the same way that if we had 10 of us all trained on this methodology and applied it, we're going to come out very consistent as well. So that's one other thing that's been proven. And I can talk about this for a while. Deeksha and Karen have heard that for a while and they get bored with it as well. So, but if you have any questions about this, please let us know at all or anything. So we can move on unless Kylie, you're seeing any questions from folks at all. All right, so now we get to, probably the main reason why we're all here is the compensation side. And this is kind of the fun stuff where the stats nerds and us get to get into this a little bit. So we looked at published salary surveys to collect market data for private and public sector industries. Now, that's key and we really applaud the city for going this way because there are a lot of positions that are across industry. So we looked at Willis Towers Watson comp data, Mercer, sorry, I didn't see that when we were reviewing this last week. That we duplicated that one. Economic Research Institute, as well as the League of Oregon Cities. So we collected market data from all of those, looking at job responsibilities, job descriptions that are going to exist as well. So they have to meet some standards. They're conducted by a reputable survey firm. They're not done in-house to an association. Survey is not self-reported. It has to go through that third party to be reviewed and cleaned and make sure it's done right. It's conducted on a continual basis, not just a one-shot survey. So they can validate data year over year. And they report its data sources, effective date, and they have a methodology for ensuring accurate matches. So that's why we sometimes, we hear about surveys from clients. We can't use all of them because we want to make sure that it comes from a valid source. So this is the market data listing on the next slide. We'll get into, a bit more of it is identifying benchmark jobs. Where, what jobs are we going to get market data on? So we identified 37 benchmark classifications that we are fairly confident we're going to get market data on. These represent 75% of the employees. So they're selected based upon representative of all the levels. We want to make sure we have A-band, B-band, C-band, et cetera. It represents all the functional areas. It's a high incumbent count. They're common in the labor market, but also some of those jobs that might be more difficult or difficult to recruit or high turnover exists. If that's something that y'all need to know about, we want to make sure we can see if we can find some information. But it's representative of the various hierarchical levels, but then also with regards to the functional areas. So that's how we end up with the 37 and those will be at the end, we can look at those as well. Keep going, Karen. Oh, we did put them here. Thank you. So these are the 37 positions that we had. You can leave it up there for a while or we can keep moving. All right, let me know, you want to see them more? Usually that's where people want to stop and they're like, hey, that's me or that's so-and-so or something like that. So, all right, when we're collecting it, we want to make sure we're following the Sherman Antitrust Guidelines, all that type of stuff. But the key criteria is that we're making sure we're matching jobs that match content. They're 80% of responsibilities. Oh, yes.
Mike, sorry, Council President Minky had a question, so, Kelly?
I just wondered, I think you said it, but I wanted to be sure. We are going to get a copy of all this? Because I haven't seen any of this beforehand.
Yes, we're going to share the PowerPoint with everybody. We waited until tonight just because they were still making some tweaks to the slides.
Okay, just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
All right, so we're matching job content, that's what's key. There's a couple of different adjustments that we're going to make to this data, okay? Oh, sorry, Karen. Sometimes those systems are a little slow. So basically, two different adjustments that we're going to make to this market data. We want to first ensure that it's all adjusted for the McMinnville labor market. Now, that's going to be different. Some of the surveys are going to have different data cuts that exist. We're going to look for the closest labor market that we can get, whether that's the state of Oregon or whether that's the Pacific Northwest or something like that. But we want to make sure it adjusts to that labor market. We use the Economic Research Institute Geographic Assessor. That's the gold standard, that's the common practice where they're looking at various different statistics. We're looking at the cost of labor. So as you can see here, McMinnville is 9.7% above the national average. So therefore, if we had any data cuts that had to be from the national data cut from there, we would adjust it up by 9.7% to make it effective for the labor market that you all are in. But when we're collecting the data, we're trying to go from these kind of focused on your area, bigger and a little bit bigger than that as well. So we're trying to get as close to we to McMinnville as possible. The other piece that we have to adjust this market data by is the effective date of the survey. Not all of those survey sources that we showed you earlier were published on the same date. And so we're aging all this to the most common effective date of March 15th, 2020. But we're utilizing World at Work, which is the Compensation Professional Association. They do a salary planning survey every single year. And they say, what are people planning to do for salary adjustments on a merit increase, on a COLA pay adjustment? This is the, what comes out this last year as well. And at that time was 3%, was the actual pay adjustment. That was the median, especially within Pacific Northwest and even within the public sector, 2% for pay range data, minimum midpoint maximum. So we utilize those annual percentages.
Of course, for this to make a call.
Yep.
You know, we have, we have the county within McMinnville. What effects does that have on the data, having a entity that's larger than the city and they having an impact on the marketplace?
Um, in, one individual organization, when it comes to the overall trends, is not going to have a huge significant impact. Now, when it comes to recruiting for individual positions, yes, it's going to have a higher level impact because of if those positions are shared between those two different entities and the locality that you're in. But for those individual adjustments, now, should you compare these, the adjustment percentages to what your immediate peers are doing? Yes, I would highly recommend that you do that. But we want to ensure that we're adjusting this broad data set by a trend number as well that represents that entire broad data set and not just by one organization.
Right.
Kylie, do you have anything to add? Oops, sorry.
Well, and then also how critical it is to make that we're comparing the same job description in functionality as compared to the title. Because the county could have a position that is not, it's got the same title, but doesn't have the same responsibility. And I mean, this is done in the private sector all the time. I come from a banking industry. And, you know, every bank is different and, you know, the banking industry has been found to have some real liabilities out there just because of how they call a specific position, but it's really the duties and the responsibilities and the breadth of control or lack of control that is there.
Yep, I completely agree. My brother's in the banking area and that's, and we have the same conversation.
Mayor, I think you might be maybe getting at some of our sworn positions within public safety for our police and fire departments. We purposefully left our sworn public safety employees out of this project because we do go through the collective bargaining process with them. So we're looking at imperable jurisdictions and using that to come up with an appropriate offer through that process. So those sworn police officers and sworn firefighters were not included in this study.
Thank you for that clarification, Kylie. It's, that's really important for us to know as we're gathering this information the first time into our minds.
All right, Karen, let's move on. So we talked about the two different adjustments and everything. These are, once we make all those, we're making the comparisons to the pay of those similar positions at the city. These are the metrics that are used in kind of establishing the competitiveness levels the city has. Anything that's plus or minus 5%, we consider that highly competitive. Allows for the margin of error in the data. It also allows for knowing that, hey, maybe the market has made adjustments up and the city hasn't. The city's made adjustments up and the market hasn't. But that's highly competitive. Plus or minus 10% is competitive. Then you get into over 10% potentially misaligned or misaligned. Now, even if positions are misaligned at more than plus or minus 15% off the market, that does not mean in reality that you need to address it in any way. It could be that the person, that you have five people in that job and you just recently hired them in the last two years. They might be more than 15% off what that market rate is because of the tenure that they have in that job. The data itself is going to give you an indicator, but it's not going to be the complete story either. So we have those in there to kind of put a framework to it. We're not here to say, this job is off, you need to adjust all the people in that job. We're here to say, let's use this data in a comprehensive fashion to develop a salary structure so the city has competitive minimums, midpoints, and maximums. So, all right, Karen. So overall, we looked at the comparison of the city at three different levels in the market, the 25th percentile, the 50th percentile, and the 75th percentile. Now, over 80% of organizations, public or private, are going to be trying to compare their salaries at the 50th percentile of the market, that middle point. Most private sector organizations, when I worked in the private sector as well, that's where they try to balance their salaries. So as you see here, we have against the public sector as well as against the full market of both public and private. Public sector, y'all are about 2.8% higher than that 50th percentile for actual pay. On the full market side, 1.1%. So overall, your actual pay is highly competitive. You've done a good job of maintaining pace with the market for actual pay. All right. So I saw some applause earlier, I feel like there should be some applause or something like that. I thought I saw some of those at least sometime. But so factors like performance, turnover, longevity, all of those things are going to impact individual job comparisons. That's just the reality of what we have there. So any questions on this chart? I really want you to focus on the middle point. We use the 25th and the 75th percentile as guidelines for us, especially when we're setting up the salary structure itself. So.
Mike, as you indicate, that's a good, that's a good place to be because we don't have to ramp up salaries so much and have such a financial impact. There could be financial impact as we see in the memo. But I've seen organizations that are so out of bounds that, you know, it takes them five years to get them into a position and that's the position to be in.
Yep, yep, I completely agree. We've worked with, have the most clients who are saying, we need to develop a five-year plan to implement this because it can't be done. So, all right, Karen, let's move on. All right, so here is where, what we're trying to really fix and what we're trying to address with a lot of these is that we are looking at both the minimum and the maximum of the pay range. And so you can see that if we compare the pay ranges that exist right now at the city, that the minimum might be competitive or highly competitive with the market. But it's the issue that the maximum itself is misaligned with the market. At the public sector side, approximately 16% below, the full market, about 20% below. The current range spread the city has is 26%. The market was over 60%. So what that tells us is that there might be kind of a fundamental difference in how the pay ranges that the city had been set in the past. Traditional public sector organizations are going to set their salary range and say, here's the minimum, here's the maximum, the maximum is set at the target pay rate, and everybody gets there. And that target pay rate is the 50th percentile. So what the city is missing out on is the ability to bring people from the minimum to that target rate to be able to pay above that when needed as well. So that's that gap that exists right here. And so now you can continue to do the same thing because your actual pay is highly competitive. But if we're looking at that salary structure and ensuring you have But if we're looking at that salary structure and ensuring you have the capability to pay, whether that's market premium positions, or high performers, or anything like that, however you desire to be able to move people through a pay range, the salary structure needs to be expanded in some way. Any questions on this slide? Before we get into the heavy math? All right. So the next step that we do is we start combining the market data that we collected with the internal equity evaluation. Now, that's where the key comes in, into having that compliance with any type of Pay Equity Act that exists. So that you can, you're letting the internal equity impact the market data that's collected. Because as we all should know, that there is historic pay inequities that exist between different occupations and industries, all of that coming into it. If you're looking at it through a job evaluation method, you're able to help mitigate some of those pay differences. And then for those jobs that you don't have market data for, you're able to slot that job into that right grade and have an assigned market range for it that is based upon a comprehensive calculation that is more than just saying, I think this job is more equivalent to this job than that job, let's put it in that pay range. You have it through a methodology. So we're gonna combine these through some trend lines, using regression analysis, trying to plot those points out and find this line of best fit. Now, we're using that 50th percentile as the basis for that salary structure as well. So you'll see this kind of, Deech should put this graph, these graphs together, and we're kind of trying to grow this into a more complex picture as well. So we can go on. So what you're looking at here is on the Y-axis, we have the dollar value of jobs. On the X-axis, these are the internal value of jobs, the decision band rating. So you'll see that we have the A, and the B, and the C, and et cetera. There are point values built behind the scenes in order to spread out those values in an appropriate way based upon the hierarchy of an organization. So you'll see that those salaries are spread out, as they should be. You're gonna have people that are lower in the job because they're new, you're gonna have people that are higher in that same job because they've been there for a while. But these are where those benchmark jobs are, that's the dollar values. The next slide is we overlay the market data. This is the full market, public and private, the 50th percentile of those. You'll see, you kind of see a trend line that exists, fairly similar. So the next piece is you find that line of best fit. Oops, did we go one too far? Nope, we didn't, all right, perfect, sorry, I thought we had. So what we're looking at here is that line of best fit. You can see that orange line, and you can see the blue line. They're very kind of right over top of each other because again, you guys are 1.1% over that market overall. But if you look at that trend, you'll can see that it starts at the low level, it goes to the high level. People that have been in the management jobs are really close to your current maximum, all that type of stuff. Probably because they've been at the city for the longest time as well. But one of the indicators that, oh, yes, go ahead.
So let's, again, and if we're gonna address it later, let me know. But when we're looking at those boxes on the right that talk about city structure, minimum, midpoint, and maximum, at some point, I'd like you to define what that means because for many years, I thought that was kind of like the private sector that was based on years in the job and performance. And I get a sense, as I've been at the city, it's a step of one, two, three, four, five years, being at max. After five years, it's that slow internal way to raise your salary, irregardless to performance, but just time in the seat, and it's over a five-year period. So I don't know if that's still the case, and I think the councilors need to know the differential between minimum, midpoint, and maximum.
Yes, that is the case. We're looking at the entry-level pay to what is the maximum highest level pay within all of those jobs. And so right now, that is a five or six, I think it's a five-step, correct, Kylie?
I think it's a five or six, yeah.
Yeah, and it might be different for different occupations or anything like that, so. And that is, and Mr. Mayor, that is a traditional public sector approach that exists. And now, when working across the country in some other places, they may also have a five-step. I worked in one in northern Minnesota, it was a five-step structure as well, but they went over that five-step over a 20-year period. It was spread out further, so it was like an 8% jump every five years.
But I think.
But that's how they managed it.
And I think it's really important for the council to know that that is, it's inherent in public sector. And we have a five-year ramp-up, and it's a part of where they start, and they know where they're going to be in five years. And then we just go to COLA kind of increases after that point.
Correct, yep.
I believe we're gonna talk about this when we get to some later slides, but one of the recommendations from Gallagher is to adjust our pay scale so it's not just the flat five or six, or however many steps, but that we have steps that get you to the midpoint. And then, once you're there, that's considered that competitive rate of pay, and then it would increase to the maximum at a slower rate. So that might happen every other year until you hit that top. So the goal of these recommendations is that our employees don't hit the cap immediately and that they have time to continue their earning potential.
And I think that's phenomenal, Kylie, from a standpoint of, you know, just time in the seat shouldn't be the major reward, but it should be, you know, to get you up, once you understand the job, get you up to a certain point, maybe that's midpoint, and then it comes to performance a bit, and longer time in the seat, and then that becomes a retention tool also.
Yep, yep, exactly. And we try to design our structures so that the range can be utilized in any type of approach that our clients need to use for their employee population. Some of them have used to say, we're gonna do steps from the minimum to the midpoint, and then we're still gonna have steps, but they're gonna move one step every two years or every three years after that competitive rate as well. So it all, you know, then maybe we're gonna still have steps, but they can only move a step if they are above, have a higher level performance metric or anything like that as well. So there's different methodologies.
Well, and I hate to, you know, break in as much as I am right now, but it's an area that I've had a lot of experience in. And again, you know, I don't like the methodology that if they're not a high, if they're not a performer, we're going to let them go, because that in many cases isn't the case because not all organizations have a review policy, a review process that's effective and all-encompassing. And so, you know, almost hide behind others sometimes.
Yep, yep, exactly. And it depends on all the methodology and the tools that each of our clients have and how they can manage this going forward. But what we'll look at next is building that range, the minimum and the dollar values of those. And what we wanna show is that here's how you can move into this new framework. And that's the big next step. But before we talk into that, I really wanna get into just the validity of this. And this is one indicator that we look at. If we did not have a number at this level, we would have been going back and tried to refine this, looking at different models. But this is kind of that statistical analysis. If you look down there, you have the R-squared piece. R squared is showing the relationship of the X-axis to the Y-axis. Anything, if it was an R squared of 1.0, those dots are gonna make the straight line. What we have here is an R squared of 0.926, so it's extremely high. We wouldn't go forward with anything that didn't have an R squared over 0.8. And having someone over 0.9, it's extremely high. The validity of the internal and the external balance here is showing that you have a very strong, valid, and defensible salary structure for moving forward. So that's one thing that, we're not making arbitrary decisions here or anything like that. There's a good basis for it. So we can move on to the next slide here. So, just an overlay as a picture. The ranges that we would develop would have a wider range spread to them. We are also looking at a progressive range spread so that jobs in the A-band and B-band that are more narrowly defined in their essential responsibilities have a narrower range spread. Jobs that are at a higher level have a broader range spread because of the higher impact of education and broader experience that go into the performance of those roles. Having 10, 15 years as being a custodian at one position is not the same as having 15 years as being a CEO, or CFO, or anything like that in other organizations. The broader impact exists, it does. And the range spread helps to identify that. Now, we understand sometimes that the optics of something like this does not look ideal, but the reality is, those are, those are the issues that we need to make sure we have the ability to address. And you can see that that range, that midpoint, gets up closer to where your current maximum is in those middle-level positions. And that's where the more higher impact would be. Your minimum is highly competitive, that line is gonna stay about the same. And it's one thing that we do have to consider on the implementation. We don't want the minimum of the range to go down below the current minimum as well. And how does that be impacted by any type of minimum wage movements? Because that is what is rising faster than a lot of those middle-level positions in the high B, C-band, causing some pay compression. So we do have to be cognizant of that over the long term as well. So you're not causing pay compression and causing more issues. Any questions on that? This kind of gets to that whole idea that the new target point of the city's pay structure is that middle point that aligns with the actual pay, and your previous current salary structure had target pay at the maximum. So, so the next slide here shows what the dollars would look like for all of those positions. So what you can see is that we do have a progressive range spread, 30% range spread. That's the difference between the minimum to the maximum. 40% for Band B, and then 50% for Band C and above. So, if you plotted those range midpoints on that line that you, on the previous graph, they would make that middle line, and then we develop ranges outside of that. And then we do have to compare all those minimums to the current minimums, all that, and make sure that we are not going down anyway, which I believe that we've done, so. Any questions on the ranges? I know it's a lot of numbers on there, but the ratings on there, that's the methodology that we worked with Kylie a whole bunch about and everything like that, to make sure she's familiar with it. But we're always here as a resource and have conversations or anything like that. We have numerous organizations that we work with on an ongoing basis, year over year, to help reevaluate those jobs and make sure they're placed in the right spot as jobs get changed and everything, to have an outside third party look at it.
Mike, can I ask just a clarifying question on the previous graph? Just to make sure I understand what you're saying there, if you can, yeah, great, thank you. So what you're saying there is that the line that represents the 1.1% of the market data, is that the city structure midpoint, or the city structure maximum? It was the city structure.
Your, yeah, the proposed structure midpoint represents the 50th percentile of that full market.
Gotcha.
Which the city is currently 1.1% of on an aggregate level.
Okay, got it.
Yep.
And so you're recommending this broader structure to be able to then have that flexibility to go higher to the proposed structure maximum, but with the evaluation of performance and different things like that, not just a straight increase over the years? Is that correct?
Correct, that would be the ideal situation, yes.
Okay, great, all right, thank you.
When I say, yeah, I say that because it's always dependent on whether or not a city, they have a good performance management methodology and everything too, so.
Yes, got it, great, thank you so much.
Yep. All right, so implementation costs. So the premise of our implementation cost is that we never recommend that there's pay cuts. I think there's been two times in my career, or we have, and that happened about 2009, when organizations were trying to like balance the books and all that kind of stuff with regards to this. Employees will be paid within the new pay ranges, and no employees are gonna be paid below. And salaries may fall above the new pay range maximums, that happens. We recommend that sometimes those are being frozen, or the compensation phrase is red-circled. They would not be adjusted until the range itself would catch up with them. If that is not a potential solution, there are different other solutions to say, how do we still provide some type of increase to those employees above the range? And that's something that we can talk about at a different point as well. So the next slide is gonna talk a little bit about the methodologies that we utilize. We have bring to minimum first, basically saying, who are all the employees? The 41 employees that are below the new minimum, and that would cause, cost $95,000. That's estimating it on a full-time level and everything, I believe. So 1.3% of overall payroll. The other thing to know is that there are 40 employees that are above the new pay range maximum. Now, we have, look and make sure we know how far they all are above. Many times, they're just like $1,000, $500 above the maximum or anything. So the next cycle, they would be within the range. On the highest level, we have bring to the proposed step. We're saying, we're gonna utilize the whole range. We're gonna look at how many times, how many years of service have they been in that position? Not just with the city either, how long have they been within that position? And so each progression step, or kind of the steps within it, whatever increment, is equal to one year. And moving them from the, that's one step from the minimum to the midpoint, and then every two years from the midpoint to the maximum. So you're slowing down that progression from the midpoint to the maximum. This is utilizing the entire range spread. So this would be 688,000, and it impacts 75 people. Now, there are numerous algorithms that you can use for how to calculate that, how many steps do we need, all that type of stuff. But this is a starting point. We wanna say, here's how many steps you should take to go from here to here. We use a 3% increment for that step increase per year. So that's where we're factoring that on, so that's how we come up with this, developing those steps within there. All right. We can move on to the next slide, and then we can kind of get this and talk a little bit all in a big, better wrap-up. So the middle option that we're looking at is the, moving into that structure, but having a cap at the midpoint. Anybody that's already above that midpoint, which is that perceived market rate, we're not gonna, not gonna address anybody in that. So there's one step, one year per step, using the years of service in that current position, impacts 50 employees, and would be a $380,000 annual cost. So that would move those people closer to that market rate, based on how many years they've been in that job. Any questions here? All right, so the next slide just has a summary of all those all put together. But we wanted to make sure you understood kind of the background and the methodologies behind those. So, it's not a small cost. It's also, in our experience, it's not a huge, large cost like, Mr. Mayor, that you had brought up before. It's not something that's unachievable, at least. So again, this does not include full-time, I mean, sorry, includes full-time, part-time, does not include public safety that Kylie brought up earlier. So, we do have about 40 employees that are both below the minimum and above the maximum. And those 40 employees are ones that you'd wanna look a little bit, and just look closely at, see how far above the maximum. There could be some other past story there that, you know, somebody had moved into a lower-level job and just never adjusted salary, that happens a lot. All right, any questions on this part? All right, so what we, oops, sorry Karen, you're right. So, we did look at a couple of different options here, with like phased-in approaches. Approach one is looking at moving everybody in year one, all those that are below the minimum. minimum. Year two is move all employees placed in the range using steps of, steps, the years of service, however, capping those increases above the current pay from year one at a maximum of ten percent. Year three is moving people up to that last step, ensuring that they get to that appropriate placement based upon their years of service.
Excuse me, Mike, we might have a question? Thank you. This is Remy. Do you mind going back to the last slide for my, structure, my question? So when you're talking about the forty-one employees that are below the proposed minimum and the forty that are above the proposed minimum, I understand that those employees could be in any of those categories, A, A2, B, C, D, F, whatever. I don't know how far it, I don't know how far it went. Is there, have you also done the analysis so we might have an idea of where those are that are below the proposed minimum and those that are above the proposed maximum? In other words, i- is it, do we know that, or do you know if twenty of the forty-one are employees that were in column A, A2, A3, et cetera? Or?
Yeah, Deeksha, I believe we have, yeah, I, I, yeah, that's a great question because it is important to know, like, kind of, at what level those are at, or are they kind of isolated? We've had experience too where they're isolated in like one job function because of past practice with regards to pay and everything like that. Deeksha, I, I know we, we have that and I believe, Kaylee, you probably have in some of the spreadsheets so we can create something, a summary that would help to, to show that and answer that question. I don't know those numbers off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Hang on just a second, my computer's been a little busy.
Perfect.
So I, I pulled it up here on my screen. I'm not going to share it because it has employee data on it with employees' names and whatnot. But predominantly, the positions that are above the maximum are in those lower A and B bands positions, which is a lot of our, our entry level positions or less technical or professional positions. The vast majority that are above the range are, are in that category. And let me pull up for the ones that are below and see if there's some themes there. The ones that are below the minimum are, it's a handful that are in our C-band positions. A good amount are in the C-band positions.
Where did that C-band start salary-wise? What correlates numerically?
It's like around, like sixty thousand a year up to like ninety to a hundred. We have a few, a few that are below that.
Okay, thank you.
So Kylie and partial, or Remy impartially answered that question. The other thing that we're doing is we're going position by position, making sure that people are properly slotted. There are a handful of people that have been either reclassified or promoted since their PDQs were submitted. And so we're making sure that folks are properly slotted as well before we push the, the full and final schedule out for folks to review.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
There's also some of the, the positions that were a little, that were below the minimum. A lot of those positions were actually in the Parks and Recreation Department and a lot of those employees are not working right now due to COVIDs. We, we did our, our kind of layoff in that department predominantly and have brought some folks back, but we're still not at the numbers that we have had in the past.
So to clarify, the employees that were laid off were included or were not included in this evaluation?
They were, their positions were included. But then, as we finished out this process, those layoffs happened right around the same time that we were compiling this data. So some of the information, some of the numbers aren't going to be a hundred percent accurate due to turnover, due to merit increases or promotions that we've had. So we need to still go back in and, and do a little bit of update.
Okay. And those were, those employees were, you said, were primarily in the below proposed minimum or above proposed maximum category?
Primarily below the minimum.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. So these are, tho- those are the costs and then we, yeah, Karen, perfect, we can save right on this slide right here. So basically what we tried to do is just kind of phase out these costs over one, two, and three years. Year one in both of them is just moving up to that, getting all the employees that are below the minimum up to the minimum. All right. The, so in approach one, we have a year two cap at a ten percent increase. Year, in approach two, in year two, we're capping at the midpoint and a ten percent increase. So you're just kind of, it's, you know, just trying to look at different ways to say, here's what the phase can be. The key is here, in both of these approaches, we have applied a salary structure movement of a one percent from year one to year two to year three to ensure that the salary structure itself does not go, go down. That's why if you added up the costs in the previous one and this cost, they're not going to be the same because year two, the salary structure does move up a little bit as well. And one thing I did forget to point out on the other one is that those are not cumulative costs. It's not increase to minimum plus increase to midpoint plus increase to the step all the way up to the top. The increase to minimum is in both of those because step one would be the minimum for po- folks that are below. We want to make sure they're at that. Anybody below the minimum is going to move up. And then it's not accumulative, the highest cost total is that far right column. But this one right here is including a step increase of the salary structure as well. So the, the overall recommendations from based on the work is, is adopting that new proposed salary struck, uh, sorry, classification structure, helping with the consistency of the job classes, flexibility, identifying transparent career paths, all those things. Adopt the utilization of a job evaluation method that helps with maintaining pay equity and internal equity. Implement a proposed, the proposed salary structure. Now, there are different implementation mo- models if that's not what you can afford in year one, year two, and year three. We can always work backwards from what those numbers are and figure out what the right, the, the right algorithm would be. So we also want to put in, it's important to assess these findings and cost implementations due to COVID. We're, we're keeping track of what organizations and how they're responding since March to now, based upon the impact of COVID. Many times organizations are moving ahead, this year at least, with salary structure increases. That's where they communicated to employees or pay increases. A lot of times they were done pre-March or they're done in March or in June, they've gone forward with it. About fifty to sixty percent of organizations have kind of moved forward to what they had planned for 2020. Other, the rest of the organizations are kind of in a wait-and-see mentality. They're planning to do it, but they're also be like, um, we're not sure, we might do half of that. So we are trying to keep our, our eye and making sure Kelly knows what we're trying to do, what, what we're hearing with regards to all these impacts. And if there's other questions, we can try to find the data or anything like that. Right now, it's, it's always a moving target because if you all remember back 2008, 2009, people were trying to figure out what to do at that point as, as well. So, and then we also have on the next slide here is kind of things to, to do into the future. Oh, sorry, next steps, approve an implementation cops, a cost option, determine a timeframe for implementing proposed changes, whether that's now or over three years. And then the key is employee communication, how that's rolled out. We have some examples that we can provide, how that was communicated, memos, emails, all those types of things that we can say. At least here's some language to start from, so you're not starting from a blank sheet of paper. And then how to potentially a, a deal with like people that are feeling like they're not assigned to the right classification as well. Think I got it through it? Yeah, you can take my name off there. You don't need to see that anymore, but we can go back to the content, see if anybody has any questions on.
I'll ask another question if it's all right.
Yeah.
So when, as, as we're moving forward and, and especially as we're communicating with the public here, and how would you boil down or how would you give the, the most succinct version of why these increases are being recommended when our pay structure is deemed to be competitive?
I think the most succinct way to do it is a recalibration of the internal relationships of the, of some of the positions. And then the next tier down would be ensuring the appropriate placement of individuals based upon how many years they have been doing that job to help alleviate pay compression based upon longevity, which is a key aspect and sometimes it's a, one of the more de-motivating aspects within an organization that is very hard to quantify. But first, it's the internal alignment, then it's the appropriate placement of individuals that are doing that like work based upon how long I have been doing it.
Does that answer your question, Remy?
I think so.
I, we'd like something that was a little bit more user-friendly. The public's not going to really catch that one really fast.
Let's, yeah, let's, let's see here.
I guess when, when I think about it, our salary bands are really narrow and coming from another agency and, and working in HR and doing salary surveys and checking on that, the, the narrowness of our salary bands is actually kind of uncommon. And so while we get people to what would be the midpoint in the recommendations from Gallagher, and that's, that's our maximum and employees don't have any additional earning potential beyond that. Where if you go to another outside agency, it's likely much higher. And so right now, we might be paying people competitively, but they could be a twenty-year, you know, veteran in their position. And if they were working in another organization, they would have a higher earning potential on that.
Well, and there's another.
Say that back to, oh, I'm sorry, I don't know who I interrupted, but.
Go ahead, Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I was to say that back to you, it's not that we are not paying competitively, it's that there's no room to grow.
And then I think there's another whole area of consideration, and that's when you, you max out too early in a career, then you're more prone to look for our other opportunities. And then you have to pay for turnover, which is at a very high rate of cost and less effectiveness. And so, Mike, I would ask you as a consultant, you're probably dealing with that all the time of the cost of turnover and bringing a, a staff up to a level of, of, of a certain expectation compared to what it takes to have a, a broader band and have a mechanism for them to be excited about working to that next level and performing at a higher level. Now, I hope that makes sense, but you know.
Yeah, no, I mean, it, it makes perfect, perfect sense when you're trying to balance what is that cost of the turnover, which is going to vary based upon level of position, how long it takes to fill, and then some positions may take only three months to become, you know, ramp up into it. Other ones are going to take a year. You got to get through a whole year's cycle in, in the financial planning process to be fully comfortable doing that work in the next year.
And, and then you.
To have the higher max.
And then you can go one or two years to find out that it's not the right person in the right seat and then you start all over again. There are so many variables to this and, and I think companies that are on the leading edge of this really understand that, that, that mix between having broader band and a process that rewards superior and good performance so that you can keep them around longer.
Counselor Gary and Counselor Garvin have their hand raised.
Zach, let's go with you first and then Adam after Zach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we move from the presentation to the discussion portion, I, I think that, I think the consultants, I also want to, in the interest of full disclosure, my lovely wife Samantha works for the McMemel Public Library, so she is a city employee, but I don't feel like that impedes my ability to have this, this discussion. Thank you again to the consultants. I, I think I've kind of one specific question and then one sort of thread that I wanted to grab onto. I guess overall, I thought planning was dense and this is still just trying to work its way through my dense head. So I, I'm kind of going to be more of a listener for change. So my specific question was, you had talked about sworn employees not being included. Is that, is that anyone other than a police officer or is this, is this everyone but the police department or who, who else was excluded?
Police officers and firefighters. So both of those positions are sworn. Though, those are both represented by a labor union, so they're represented and they're sworn. In this study, we included employees who were not sworn, but they may have been represented. So if you think about our police department, it could be our record specialists, it could be people who work in an administrative role, same with at the fire department. So there were employees from either department included in this process, but not police officers and not firefighters.
Thank you. And I think what you guys, the thread that I was pulling at or, or I'm interested in, I think you guys were talking a little about it, is, is the sort of phenomenon that I was familiar with, that we, we quickly heavily invested in training great qualified people that then went to go work long careers for other departments in other cities. And so how to get at that, it was, I'm still trying to rectify how we, we, what we competitively pay and yet max out quickly. It's, it's, it's an interesting dichotomy, so I'm interested to see what the suggested solutions are and where that curve on the graph is. So, yeah, I think, thanks for that and, and a lot of info. So that, that's kind of the main thing I'm, I'm chewing on at the moment. I don't know if, if the consultant has any comments, but the rest of the discussion could maybe answer that. So which you guys were kind of talking about already.
Well, and I, I wonder, Counselor Gary, if, if the, the kind of, the examples that you're giving with the turnover, I think those might be in the public safety positions.
I, I could think of some of that, you know, in, I mean, I don't have to give it specific examples, but be, beyond that, I think there were a few in, in sort of the, the, I guess, wastewater or a few other places where it just felt like people got trained up, felt like they maxed out and then went and did other things. And I know there's a host of other factors that go into that, but I can think of a few examples of the, outside of just those positions, so.
I may follow up with you about those, just to make sure I have an understanding of the ones that you're talking about. And there might be other reasons for those, so, but I can follow up with you about it.
And I don't know, Mike, maybe if you see that in your experience with other jurisdictions or if we have a, if we're you, if we are, if we have a high percentage of that, maybe, maybe that was what the data was showing as far as quick to max and then sort of, whoo, what do I do now? Is that common for a lot of places that haven't had the study or?
Yeah, there's, yeah, and, and especially with the, the proximity to a, a metro area, it does have a more, a higher level impact on that. We've worked a lot of organizations that might be, you know, an hour, hour and a half outside of, of that metro area and they ha- it has a lower cost of living and everything and they may pay lower. They're going to go down there, they get the job, they can be there for five years, get their, their certifications or whatever that is. We see it a lot within like the, the public safety for the sworn positions that Kelly was talking about as well, where they're going to get that, then they can move into something else and have a higher level. That's where it comes to balance between what are we, where are we placing our salary structure in comparison to that? You're not the major metro area, but you're close enough, people can drive forty minutes in one way, they can drive forty minutes the other way. So that, that's, that's where it comes into play, exactly the example you're talking about.
Seems like it is tough to compete with the gravity of some of those places in different ways, yeah, so.
Mm-hmm, yep.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation tonight. Kind of circling back around to some of Remy's comments.
Kind of circling back around to some of Remy's comment. I was curious, and this probably more question for Kylie, on with those wage compressions, are we not seeing still like high tenured employees? I mean, from what I've heard tonight, it kind of seems like that would be at risk of, of not creating a higher ceiling within the organization is that we could lose tenured employees, but from my understanding, we have a lot of long-term tenured employees. And so it kind of seems like we're spending money, if we do this at full scale, we're spending money to get, to look for a benefit that we're already getting without spending the money.
Let me go ahead and pull up our.
I'm sorry if that was a confusing question, but.
I think I, I think I follow it. I mean, we definitely do have a lot of years of service at the city. We have a lot of people that are above the 10-year mark. We have many that are pushing 20 and even higher than 20 years. You know, again, I, I think that, that this, the, the way that our system is structured now, it's an example of a system that wasn't created in an objective way and it's not entirely based in data. And in compensation philosophies, generally that competitive pay is at the midpoint of a salary band. And so if we're going to maintain competitive pay, that should be the starting point that we build that range and we can move up to the max and down to the min. What we're doing right now is essentially kind of shortchanging some people who've been here for a long time, who aren't getting paid, they would get paid somewhere else. And I, I under, I think I understand where you're coming from because there is definitely a cost to this. But I think there's also a cost if, if we don't do something like this in employee morale and, you know, eventually in our ability to handle turnover that will occur because those 20-year employees probably aren't going to be here a whole, whole lot longer. I want to make sure that our pay ranges really are competitive. And if, if I'm looking around in other agencies, I see that people can max out a lot higher. Their earnings potential is, is much higher in other organizations.
And I'll add while Kylie's looking to pull up that data and talk maybe a little bit more specifically, it's also important that the, this system will ensure that we've got some internal equity as well. And that's, that's a really important component of, of this proposal is that we eliminate some sort of structural inequities that already exist in our pay scale and our pay ranges. The other thing that we're starting to see happening is as people are leaving the organization for whatever reason and we're recruiting particularly hard to fill positions, we're finding that we're having to place people higher in the range than an entry level because they're either in another position that's already gotten a pretty competitive pay at, you know, at our midpoint or near our high range, or in some cases, we're hiring people who are, already have quite a few years of service and they're not really interested in starting over. And so there's an interesting dynamic that we may have people near or at top step who've been here a long time and also people who are near or at top step who haven't been here a long time. And that creates some kind of internal friction as well. It doesn't fully recognize the time in service. And, and I know that this isn't just about time in service, but it is, it is a component of how we compensate people. And Mike might be able to talk about some of the larger industry trends in those areas too.
Just looking at the years of service in the data that we're looking at for this project, you know, a few months old now, we have, you know, nearly 50 employees who have over 10 years of service with the city and almost 25 of those are more than 20. So we are going to see a lot of those folks retire in, you know, not too long.
Other questions for Kylie or Mike or?
Counselor Stassen has her hand raised.
Go ahead, Wendy. Amanda, we could probably take down the slide, which would give us an opportunity to see more on the main, the main plate. There we go.
Awesome. Okay, and this might be a combination of a question for Mike and Kylie. Mike, you had mentioned in your presentation when you were answering the question about the increased maximum that you could have along with a really good system for evaluating performance and things like that. What is, and Kylie, this might be where you come in, what scope of, is outside of the scope of work that would be inherently necessary for us to do in order for this to be successful? You know what I mean? Like, we're going to get a product here that has a certain scope of work and there will be additional work that will come along with this in order to make sure that we can fully utilize what we've done so far.
Yeah, so, so we'll have the recommendations come out of this and then, like I said at the beginning, we'll, as a city, go back in and look at this through our lens of our budget, our core services discussion, those types of things and end up sharing our, you know, actual recommendation. We'll also make sure that we've got the right data in there aged appropriately for who has a merit increase or a promotion or something like that, or if any turnover has happened since then. I think the conversation about a more standardized or consistent performance management methodology, it's something that we've talked about as a management team. We have some departments who are very, very solid at conducting performance evaluations. Many of those department heads are on the call tonight. I see their evals as they come through, but they're not consistent throughout the entire city. And we've, we've looked at using some technology to help us with that, but we haven't ultimately come up with, with a recommendation on what we'd like to do for it at this time.
And do you think that that particular, that work would be necessary to be able to fully implement this or could be done later or, and you can implement them separately from each other or are they dependent on, you know what I mean? Because there's a segment.
I think I understand your question. I don't, I don't know if they're exactly dependent on each other. I think, you know, in an ideal world, we would have a very consistent performance management strategy across the city at the same time that we do a compensation adjustment. I don't know if that's something we have the capacity to do as a city right now. This, I'm confident that we can implement recommendations from this effectively. And then continually work on bringing consistency to that performance management strategy.
Great. And that was my question, just to make sure that we, because we had capacity to be able to do it effectively.
Thank you.
And, and, and I agree with Wendy. I see exactly, you know, Wendy has quite a little expertise in, in HR in her own company, you know, and I just can go back to the, the, my, my, my experience as a banker where as a, as a district leader, I looked at probably 150 and we looked at positionings within the grade, we looked at performance, and then we had discussions that were two days with all of us in the room. It was hard, but there totally was a consistency of all bands of employment. So we do that, they may not be the same criteria, but the way we look at them, we're completely in sync and you knew you were getting a consistent evaluation and then we linked that to time, pay and really got a sense. And that was, that was a big, you know, twice a year, well, we do that mid-year just to look at performance and at the end of the year, that was a weak process for all of us in the whole state that we're doing that. And we would sit and have very lively discussions around those issues and maybe many of you out there have had that experience, but I can get a sense of where Wendy's coming from that perspective.
Yeah, I think the, the pay for performance is very different in private sector than in the public sector. There are some public sector organizations that use a strategy that incorporates pay for performance. The last place I worked, we did that. At least for our exempt and management level positions, we would have, you know, factors like that go into our evaluation and dictate whether or not you got an increase and how big that might be. Right now, the recommendations from this are to, to use the, the grades and steps, but to get to that midpoint, you know, at a reasonable amount of time and then ease off as you get to the maximum. If, if we want to look as a city at a pay for performance model, that's something that we could definitely do. I don't know if we've got the capacity to evaluate that right now.
And just to, and just to add to that, Kylie, I've come to grips with that a long time ago, that there is a differential. But the one thing that I still struggle with a little bit is that we have departments that do a good job of evaluation and others that don't. And I really want to see a consistency there because I, you know, our greatest asset is our employee, but our greatest liability can be if we don't handle them equally across the board. And so I do understand that. One last question that I would have is, we've been working on this project, it's been on the table and we've been working and I am so excited to be to a point where we are having a consultant's report in front of us. The next question I have is, I know there's a lot of additional work to be had, but when we look at the budget, okay, and the impacts that it could have on the budget, how prepared are we, you know, and I, we're not looking out three years, but how prepared are we for, and the budgets in, you know, the budget for 2000 and 2001 is already enacted, we're getting close to the six-month point, but where are we in our thought process? And Jeff, you can be a part of this too, of 2021, 2022, 2023, and 2024, because it's going to put a bit of a strain on a budget where we have now just come up and made a determination where we'd like to be with our reserves. So that would be a question. So we would definitely, once we're comfortable with the data and we understand what the cost implications of the various implementation strategies are, we'd need to build those into our forecasting model and see what kind of impact it had year over year on the organization before we could come back to you with a firm recommendation. Thank you for that. Other questions from counsel? And I can't see all of you, so Claudia, if you see hands I don't see.
Mayor, doesn't look like I see any other hands.
Well, this has been a really good discussion. Mike, any closing comments for us? Kylie, any closing comments for us?
Mike, do you have anything?
From me, just a pleasure of working with you all. That's about it. I appreciate the questions and the discussion tonight and just to let you know that we're here for all the follow-up questions. If you have any, Kylie can send them over and Deekshank, Karen and I will get the, the answer we can get, we'll find it.
Thank you, Mike, and for your group. Again, these are the, these are the analysis that when you're talking about R squared, that's above me, okay? And I love numbers, but boy, that's above me. Kylie, again, any closing comments from you and then also just re, 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 readdress where you're going to be going in the time, the timeframe that we could expect.
Yeah, so like Jeff said, we'll put this kind of through the lens of our budget model and our forecasting model. So we'll come back to the council with that. I'm not 100% sure of the timeline on that, so I'll need to connect with Jeff and Jennifer on that one. I think one thing I wanted to convey out of this to the council is, you know, this is another example of a system that we have at the city and it's really important that we, we build systems objectively and that we maintain them over the long term. So I look at this recommendation as it's kind of a checkup and, and the recommendation is to get us in alignment with the market. And then if we maintain this kind of a system, which one of the really nice things about using that decision band method is that it's a pretty easy to maintain system, I don't think we'll see major adjustments in the future, you know, maybe just little catch-ups here and there, small market adjustments, but nothing to the magnitude that we're seeing on this. So this is kind of a point in time and we want to make recommendations to, to make improvements on it. But if we can maintain these kinds of systems, you know, we shouldn't have to come back with, with presentations like this, like we'll just take care of it. So hopefully that's the case and we don't have to R-square you again. I that that's radius squared and if you don't know how to apply it, then you don't know how much wine is in your tank.
Coming from a winemaker, right, Remy?
It's important, it's important.
Okay. Okay, well, I, I'd like to thank our consultants. I'd like to thank the employees that are on the line and our department heads and you taking a real interest in our discussions tonight and council. And then we've got some community members that are with us also this evening. So again, thank you for a good discussion, one that we've been waiting to have for a long time and have a, have a good evening, be safe and we'll see you sometime on the same station at a later time. So thank you.